It's okay, we have form though.
Oh, there's no one speaking in the microphone.
Oh, oh, oh. But they don't hear the background noise?
They may not, all of the mics are muted currently.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to ask this photo call role for us.
Robert Byrd.
Here.
Alma Cortez.
Priya Batra.
Here.
Astrid Hager.
Here.
Abigail Marquez.
Here.
Summer McBride. Lisa Whitecrow.
Here.
Carol Sagala.
Here.
Deanne Tilton Durfee.
Here.
Jaclyn McCroskey.
Here.
Alahandra Alvaron Moses. Marisela Ramirez.
Here.
And Holly Mitchell.
Here.
Form is present.
Thank you very much. I know that we've got a couple of members, hey, who are joining us, not shortly, but now. Today, I'd like to thank everyone for showing up for today's special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and I want to thank you for making it a priority to be here. We're going to be discussing some complex and, shall I say, controversial matters that have significant impact on all of our family, friends, and neighbors. The information shared today will equip us to plan thoughtfully and effectively for the necessary changes ahead. I don't know how many of you, hopefully none of you, are tracking the Board of Supervisors meetings every Tuesday. Some of you perhaps are, but for the last three Tuesdays, our CEO has opened the meeting with a presentation on the county's budget woes. It's done a really masterful job of helping all of us, the public, understand, you know, kind of cause and effect. The impact of HR1, the impact of the fires, the impact of labor negotiations, the impact of AB 218. Just a series of issues and where it kind of leaves us. She's provided some amazing charts that you, I don't know if you've seen them, you might be interested in taking a look at, so you understand what we're facing here in LA County, that really, for the general public, explains it. So as my constituents text me, and they do, about, you know, the new eight-dollar fee to park at a county park, or the closure of our regional parks, Kenny Hall Park's going to be closed two days a week? I said, and did you notice what's happening to Medicaid and SNAP? And all of these critical life-sustaining services. So if you haven't taken a look, go on the CEO's website, just to take a look at those, the PowerPoint, because I think it makes it very clear about what's happening. Let me move on. There are no AB 2449 remote requests for this meeting. Thank you all for showing up in person. Let me go ahead and remind us all that today's agenda is primarily informational. But I'm sure that there will be actions that we will be called upon to take to prepare for these changes that are really going to impact us all. So let me move on to Agenda Item Number Three and hear directly from our President and CEO, Carla.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell, and I want to start by thanking the Board for being here today. Earlier this year, all of you requested an additional meeting to get an update about what's happening at the federal level and the state budget, and today's meeting is to deliver on that request. I also really want to thank Aurea, our VP of Policy and Community Engagement, and Ofelia, oh, there she is, Ofelia, who is interim Director of Policy. The two of you really put in a lot of work and effort to pull together this meeting and to get information, and you'll hear more about some of the presenters today, so thank you to the two of you. We're going to jump into a lot of numbers, a lot of programs and budget updates that will be tough to hear. But I think it is important for all of us to remember why we are here, and it is important for us to be really, really clear about the future. We are trying to build for young children in Los Angeles as we think about everything that's happening at the federal level. We exist, First Five LA exists, and our strategic plan is really, really clear that our purpose is to make sure that every child in Los Angeles, irrelevant of zip code, irrelevant of race, irrelevant of income level, every child has the best opportunity to succeed in Los Angeles. And this is the commitment we all made in the strategic plan. A place where every child is, has the opportunity for love, for stability, and for actually receiving the services and supports that are needed. And that is our really clear North Star. And we cannot have that conversation about what our North Star is without talking about what the federal landscape has meant for children and families in Los Angeles County. Today, you will hear more about the One Big Beautiful Bill as an example of some of the shifts that we're seeing. And in really, really plain terms, this means that young children in Los Angeles will have difficulties in accessing food security. The question we have to ask strategically is, when will these impacts be felt by families? Right now, there is announcements, but when will we actually see some of this? And what can First Five LA, our partners, our grantees, do to work together to make sure that at least the impact is dampened? So today, I hope that you get a sense of the reality of what we're hearing from the federal administration, the reality of our budget. And I want to be really, really clear, there are many of our partners that are focused on the sense of urgency, what is happening right now, and there are partners that are focusing on, well, what are we going to do four, five years from now? And what the Board has challenged us and what our team members are really clear about, we have to hold both fronts. We have to address the urgency of what's happening, but we have to think about, what are we going to do three or four years down the line? So on the urgent front, here's what we have been focused on. We think it is really, really important that all of us understand the federal and state budget and understand it in order to figure out what the real impact will be, and to make sure that people on the ground, our communities, are hearing what's actually happening as opposed to sort of going down a rabbit hole and thinking, what is true, what is not true? So first and foremost, on the, that's the area we're focused on. Second, we've been really, really clear about being on the ground with community leaders around some of the chilling effect of immigrant, of what's happening with immigrant communities. And our Commissioner has done a lot of work, and I point to apologies, in LA City, a lot of work to make sure that we're getting basic needs for families and communities. So we're working really closely with folks on the ground to make sure that folks at least have food on the table. And then lastly, we want to be really, really clear that First Five LA is flexible in our funding during these times with the limits that the Board has set to make sure that our grantees are able to respond as quickly and as most efficiently as possible to communities that are asking for support. And then we are really having a lot of discussions within the organization about what our long-term strategies are going to be. And I want to point out a few things. You will hear a lot more about longer-term strategies in October and November. But we are deeply prioritizing our prevention work, making sure that every child is born healthy, making sure that we're looking at black infant mortality, and making sure that we're responding in culturally and linguistic ways and elevating those services. Those are long-term strategies that we should not stop looking at. We are also looking at longer-term innovation grants, and you'll hear more about this in October and November, where all our kids deserve a place to be outside and play and be joyful, where we're not just thinking about fear or what we're hearing about cuts, but that we're building spaces where children are thriving and playing outside. And then what you will hear more in October, we are looking at every contract dollar that First Five LA invests to make sure that it is advancing equity. So you've heard of the Equity Index. We are focused on looking at, where are there racial disparities, poverty disparities, or regional disparities in regards to opportunities? And we're making sure that we're shifting dollars to address those issues. So today, you will hear things that honestly should upset all of us, but the intent of sharing this information is to make sure that we are thinking together about, so where are on-ramps and what could we do in partnership with all of you and our grantees to respond to some of the federal cuts? And we are also really pleased Commissioner Ramirez and her colleagues at Lego will share some strategies that showed some effective ways of addressing how to respond to issues that we hear from the feds. So with that, I will turn it back to Chair Mitchell for the rest of the presentation.
I appreciate that. Is there any public comment on our President and CEO's presentation?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Board members before we jump right in headfirst? All right, seeing none again, I'm glad that we all could be together today to participate in this. Let's start with Agenda Item Four, our presentation for fiscal year 2425 State Recap. And thanks to our Community Engagement and Policy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So happy to join all of you today. Thank you, Carla, and thank you, Chair Mitchell, for your remarks. You know, I, like you, Carla, I was remembering that Dr. Ferrer asked us to schedule this meeting anticipating that this time was going to pull us in many directions, but that this time is also calling us, as you said, to stay focused on our strategic plan. We have learned powerful lessons from recent crises, from the wildfires, from the COVID-19 pandemic, and those events taught us that deep, authentic partnership with community is really important and that the only way for us to get through these times is together. They reinforced in us the urgency of addressing root causes and longstanding inequities that continue to disproportionately affect some children and families. And we know that the exclusion and isolation of families don't happen in a vacuum. They are symptoms of broader systemic inequities that we must continue to challenge and transform together. We have been seeing a troubling wave, as, you know, you both share, federal developments with the challenges to Medi-Cal, to Head Start, and now that the federal big bill includes major, massive cuts to healthcare, especially Medi-Cal, along with continued threats to Head Start and just our safety net. We know that these decisions are landing heavy on families and children prenatal to five. And we at First Five have not lost sight of who is being affected. These decisions, as I said, are hitting families hard, limiting families' access to healthcare, to childcare, early learning, even the ability to put healthy food or enough food on the table for their children. These, and housing stability, are foundational supports that, when missing, result in trauma and intergenerational trauma at times and poor outcomes for children. Families don't experience policy decisions in isolation. Budget cuts, legislative shifts, and policy changes affect them at multiple levels and show up in their families' daily lives. In light of the current federal and state landscape, all of our First Five LA departments have been working really closely together to integrate their program priorities so that we can better respond and support families during these evolving challenges. Our staff has stayed closely connected with our grantee partners, gathering concrete information about what families are experiencing. And that insight has been critical to informing our policy, legislative, and our budget advocacy priorities. So today's informational presentations, they're meant to help to contextualize our work within the broader federal and state budget and policy landscapes and how these decisions are impacting children in LA County. I'm going to briefly share the flow of, you know, our time together and the presentations, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ofelia so that she can take us through updates on the state budget and the bills that we're supporting. Ofelia will do that, and then after her presentation, you are going to hear from External Presenter Chris Haney, President and CEO of the California Budget and Policy Center. He was here, a guest presenter, at the February Commission Meeting when he spoke about the Governor's 2025 proposed, state-proposed budget and shared his perspective on the federal landscape. And you said that it would be good for him to come back once we knew more about decisions at the federal level. So today, in Information Item Number Five, he will share early insights, well, updates on what's happening at the federal level, what it means for California, and early insights since things, as our Chair said, with the county are unfolding, right? And analysis are being done. So following Chris, on Item Six, you're going to hear from two of our Commissioners, and our President already spoke to that, about the changing landscape for Head Start and the best practices, the strategy that was employed, the best practices to protect Head Start, and what we have to look towards in the next period to make sure that our young children can continue to not just thrive, but flourish during these challenging times. And then lastly, when we were here in June, we had to change our agenda. We had a presentation scheduled by Dr. Manuel Pastor, also an economist. He was going to focus on building equitable communities in the era of change and uncertainty. And he was gracious enough to move his presentation to today, so we will have an opportunity. The issue continues to be as important now as it was in June. So we have a lot of ground to cover, but we have asked all of our speakers to include time for discussion and for questions. So I will do my best to create space and keep time so that you can have conversation and make sure that you have the information that you need to be ambassadors and also to guide us, give us guidance on the work that we're doing. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ofelia.
Thank you, Aurea. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm really excited to get us, kick off the exciting series of presentations that we have this afternoon, but wanted to first provide a really quick recap of the state budget and bills that we were monitoring in alignment with our 2025-2029 strategic plan. To start our conversation, I want us to take us back all the way to January with the start of the new legislative session. Today in August, we have a signed budget. There continues to be a good amount of budget and bill advocacy work, most of it tied with the federal decisions and uncertainty that Chris will speak to his next presentation. But wanted to take us through the roadmap of where we've been and where we're at. September 12th is the last day that the legislative session has, and Governor Yousum has until October to sign or veto any bills. But as you can see in the map, the budget work and bill advocacy still continues. We do have a signed budget, but there's still a lot of work that is being done currently. As a reminder, our multi-year policy agenda aligned with First Five LA's strategic plan focuses on our three goals and nine objectives. We use the policy agenda to develop annual policy priorities and guide First Five LA's policy work. It really informs and authorizes the policy and advocacy work for the organization and clarifies the federal, state, and local policy priorities the organization can engage in. It really serves as a guide to determine where First Five LA leads, supports, or does not engage in any policy issues. This includes guiding all of our internal public policy analysis. So that, so this is how you'll see the next few slides on the state budget is through the alignment with our, with our policy agenda. But first, here's a very quick overview on the themes on the final budget. Chris will go more into depth in, later in his presentation, but the 2025-2026 final budget did include $321.1 billion in total spending, which includes $228 billion of spending from General Fund, an estimated $89 billion in special funding, and about $4 million in spending from bond accounts. Prior to the final budget, during the May revise, the Governor highlighted multiple, many issues and factors, creating a very unique and challenging budget landscape. Specifically, the Governor pointed to the Trump's land, which speaks to the volatile federal-level policies and decisions that started in January and continue today in August, and probably won't stop anytime soon. Also, the overall federal uncertainties, again, particularly looming cuts to entitlement programs that we've seen in the last couple of weeks and really the last couple of months, are devastating LA County wildfires, which then, of course, led to another year of delayed tax filings for those impacted, and therefore a less clear line of sight of really how much tax revenue the state could anticipate this year. On to the details of the budget and highlights as it pertains to our policy agenda. In alignment with our strategic goal that children prenatal to age five and their families have their basic needs met, we saw funds to support increases in managed care base rates, primarily for primary care, specialty care, ground emergency, medical transportation, and hospital outpatient procedures. We also saw various changes to streamline the CalWorks program, program experience, including one that expands allowable activities under CalWorks Welfare-to-Work Program to include educational activities such as obtaining a high school diploma and post-secondary education leading to a degree or certificate. Chris will go a little bit more into depth into this, but while there was some funding to combat homelessness and housing, there wasn't specific funding allocated to support local homelessness efforts. The state budget also reformed the California Environmental Quality Act, which, among other things, now exempts nine types of projects from environmental reviews. This includes childcare centers, health clinics, food banks, and farm worker housing and welfare prevention. And finally, we did see an increase of $52 million in one-time General Fund for food banks in 2526. In alignment with our strategic goal that children prenatal to age five have nurturing relationships and environments, we saw the universal school meals program in 2025-2026 fully funded for the current school year. We also saw the expansion of the California Food Assistance Program moving forward. The May revise had suggested this expansion to be subject to a trigger contingent on the availability of General Fund in spring 2027. The final budget rejected and moved forward with the expansion. And finally, we saw an Excite cleanup fund shift for cleanup of residential properties near the former Excite Battery Recycling Facility not too far away from here in Vernon, California. And finally, in alignment with our strategic goal that children prenatal to age five have a solid foundation for well-being, lifelong learning, and success, we saw the Governor continue his commitment to increase childcare spaces by funding increased spaces for this year. His overall commitment is of 200,000 childcare spaces. While the budget also suspended the 2025-2026 statutory cost of living, or COLA, for childcare and development programs, it does redirect $70 million in COLA funds to support rate increases for all subject childcare and preschool providers. This is an item, this is another item where advocates continue to work on throughout the summer on. The budget also provides funding for the full implementation of TK this year. And as a reminder, this is the first year of full implementation of TK throughout the state and includes $30 million reduction in both 2024 and 2025 for the Emergency Childcare Bridge Program, which I know LA County has been tracking and keeping an eye on. This budget also includes the elimination of dedicated resources for refreshing regional trainer, or regional center implicit bias training for that, but included funding to support Behavioral Health Services Fund trainings. Two of the items that First Five LA was heavily tracking this year were policy items related to our devastating wildfires and around immigration efforts. In the final state budget, we saw a few items, most notably funding to support wildfire prevention, control, and resource management activities on an ongoing basis, and a one-time fire-related property tax backfill for impacted basic-age school districts that were impacted by the fires. Chris will go into a little bit more detail on the immigration pieces as it relates to health, so I won't really get into that, but we did see additional funding to support the Department of Justice to defend the state against any actions by the federal government. For example, Attorney General Bonta recently sued the Trump administration for freezing billions in education grants just weeks before the school year started. So funding would support efforts like so funding would support efforts like those. This year, First of L.A. actively supported four bills, all authored by our L.A. delegation members. We went over the bills last time we presented, but wanted to highlight that AB 607, AB 49, and SB 626, all in alignment with our strategic plan and policy agenda, were all referenced to the committee on appropriations. They all come with a price tag, so they all continue to be negotiated and analyzed by, by the different offices. And AB 421, which was authored by Assemblymember Solachi, was pulled earlier this year and will now be a two-year bill. With that, I'll stop there and take time for some questions. Thank you.
Quick question. Suspense, I know they're on break until Monday, so suspense file, where I'm assuming most of those bills went, comes up like right after Labor Day?
Right after Labor Day, right before the deadline. So a very quick turnaround for the authors to really make the case for their bill.
Questions or comments? I learned something new, that the parliamentarian of the U.S. Senate apparently has, I don't know if they can reprimand the administration, but told the administration that the bill's official name is HR1 and stopped calling it
Thank you.
Beautiful, because that's not its name. So HR1 is what we should refer, which was very helpful for me, because I would, it would get stuck in my throat. So just FYI, I wanted to share, you know, you know better, you do better. So I wanted to share what I learned. I should probably send the parliamentarian a thank you note. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I, do I have to open up for public comment before we go on to the next panel?
Yes.
Yes. Any public comment on Agenda Item Four, which is our state budget recap?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. It just hit me. Given the fact that the ramifications of HR1 kind of continue to make themselves apparent, and, and I feel like I heard that the governor had proposed to come back in the fall, potentially a special session. Do we have a sense if the state budget's going to have to be tweaked at all? Or will the trailer bills that they're working on now handle that?
Chris.
Chris, got you. Okay, beautiful. Got it. Excellent. Let's move on to Agenda Item Five. Chris, thank you for coming again. We appreciate you, again, from the California Budget Policy Center. And we're going to hear now the federal landscape update.
I will turn it over to Chris in a minute. I just wanted to welcome, along with the, our chair, welcome Chris back. He and his team have really been working to democratize the process of the state and federal budget, and I wanted to share that because we have really been looking to the California Policy and Budget Center to get accurate information, especially when we think about the timing of when, you know, decisions will go into effect. They have a one-sheet paper that has a clear timeline, so that when community partners call us, we're able to share a little bit more information so that we can have a conversation that allows us to plan and not, you know, feel like the urgency and the reaction has to happen in the moment. And so, you know, yes, now, I couldn't say the name, the original name, and so HR1 have, they have also been tracking the developments and, you know, the implications for the state, and, and Chris will share insights of, you know, what it means for L.A. County. And so it'll be great, Chair Mitchell, for you to also help when we get to that part of the discussion. But we did ask Chris to particularly focus on what it means for Medi-Cal and healthcare more broadly, for SNAP, TANF, all of the safety net issues, and housing, because we know that these programs are lifelines for families in L.A. County, and the cuts are going to have a deep and lasting consequences. So in his presentation, we have asked Chris if he could pause for questions after the health overview and after the housing overview, and then at the end of the presentation, just so that we can invite your questions and voices.
Great. Thank you all for the opportunity to be with you all again. Honored to be with you a second time this year. I wish it was under different circumstances. I don't have a lot of good news to share with you, and if there's any community in the country I'd love to be sharing some good news with this year, I think it's probably this one. And so I apologize if some of this presentation comes off a little analytical in its form. I think we just need to understand what we now have in front of us, but I just want to start by saying, for me and my team, our hearts hurt about what I'm about to share with you all. People are going to be harmed. Families are going to be harmed, and it now sits with all of us to figure out what to do about that, to document the harm, and to figure out what we can do to build back when the time comes. So just want to say that as a place to start. I'm going to do several things today. I'm going to review just what happened, federal-state context, high level, describe some of the key provisions in both what the state enacted, building on what Ofelia just shared, and what is in the federal HR1 bill, do that by the three program areas Ofelia just shared, and then kind of talk briefly about what to expect next. So kind of very high level, where we're at is state leaders enacted a budget. They're still working on it, as Ofelia shared, but they enacted a budget back in late June that closed a budget shortfall, that was really probably in the range of about $20 billion, which in a two, on a $228 billion general fund is not huge, but is also, you know, was not where they wanted to be, and that was driven by some of the factors Ofelia outlined, including the effects of the tariff policies and other Trump administration economic policies on economic conditions in the stock market. Not long after, on January, on July 4th, President Trump signed in the law the HR1 that puts unprecedented levels of tax cuts that I'll say more about, and offset some of those tax cuts by deep cuts to healthcare and food assistance programs, and I'll talk about the details. And I just want to say that it's now back in the, that the attention now turns back to state leaders to determine how they respond. They have a session coming up. They come back in a session next week on August 18th, wrap up in, in early September, or mid-September. To answer the question that's already been asked, I think there's room within the trailer bill language from them to take some early actions, particularly associated with things in HR1 that take immediate effect. I think the scale of what they have in front of them is even there is larger than what they can do, and they don't have the consensus yet to do the bigger thing they'll need to do, which was raise revenues, and that's going to take some time to build that kind of consensus. So that's the short answer on that side of that. I also just want to start by just reminding, I, I shared this with you back when I was with you in February, just a reminder that of all the federal, all the state funds that the state spends in a given year, about a third, or in this current fiscal year, 35% come from the federal government. So the two governments are fundamentally intertwined, and we can't experience something like what HR1 is without it actually having some significant impact on the state and on local governments, particularly large local governments like L.A. County and L.A. City. On the state budget side, I said earlier, there was a sort of $20 billion deficit. That was sort of an inflated number. We think it was really more about $7 billion when you took away some of the things that they had put on the table, like they drew down $7 billion from the state's rainy day fund. You don't usually count rainy day fund things in your deficit numbers. And they left $4.5 billion in a special discretionary reserve that they have each year called the Special Fund for Economic Uncertainties. This is the place where the state draws down things like emergency funding for things like wildfires. So it's good, tends to be good that they leave funding in that pot of funding from year to year. Of all the budget solutions that they put in place, internal borrowing, various kinds of budget maneuvers, the one I want you to pay attention to here is the, is the light blue share of this donut, which is the spending reductions part, which is to say that about a quarter of the way that they resolved the budget shortfall is through actually spending cuts that were put in place, primarily spending cuts that affect Medi-Cal, and I'll say more about that here shortly. What they didn't do, just to come back to the revenue question, is there are no significant changes on the revenue front. They did not propose to raise any additional revenues to resolve the state budget shortfall or to anticipate what was coming at the federal level. And while the federal level may have been hard because the scale wasn't always known, the combination of the state budget shortfall and the anticipated cuts meant that they could have built some momentum into the revenue side, and so they've now left themselves with a big question mark on that side of things as well. So let's talk about HR1, or the reconciliation bill as it's known. The broad contours are, I think, the things you probably all have followed well. There's $4.5 trillion in tax cuts, the vast majority of which go to high-income households and profitable corporations. These are the extension and expansion of the Trump tax cuts from 2017. And they offsetted some of the costs of those tax cuts with $1 trillion in cuts to Medicaid or Medi-Cal, you know, work requirements for certain adults, various bureaucratic barriers I'll talk more about, restrictions on coverage particularly for immigrant populations. It's still early in terms of the guess about what the costs are to the state of California, but the Kaiser Family Foundation is projecting that the 10-year cost, this is a bill that goes through 2034, the 10-year cost to the state of California, the reduction in federal revenues in Medicaid is between $112 and $187 billion, a big range. I think it's important to understand that most of the Medicaid cuts don't take effect until late 2026 or early to mid 2027. So it's not the full 10 years even of the bill. We're talking about most of the cuts hitting in a seven-to-eight-year period. And so if you kind of average out what Kaiser is sharing with us here, I think $15 to $20 billion in lost federal revenue in just the Medi-Cal arena for California. So it's a big, it's a big number, right? It's just to sort of say, there's a scale here that is scary for state leaders. They have a year or so to get ready for it, but it's, we're talking about big numbers that force them to choose between whether they allow people to lose coverage or whether they find some way to continue that coverage at the state level. The other aspect of this is that they then made some significant changes to the SNAP program or what we call CalFresh Year. They should, the first thing is in an unprecedented move, they, for the first time in history, they shifted the cost, some of the costs of paying for the program to states. California will have to take on nearly $2 billion a year to cover 15% of the costs of SNAP in California. That 15% is a larger number than for some other states because the California has a larger quote-unquote "error" rate or a lower participation rate for various factors, and so we have to pay a higher percentage under the way they constructed the bill. We also have to take on $650 million in additional administrative costs. So when you add that all up, it's about $2.5 billion in annual general fund the state has to pick up to keep the program going, even at the level the federal government now will be continuing it at. And then there are a set of key provisions that affect the recipients. There are expanded time limits that will put about 370,000 Californians at risk of losing their coverage, particularly for caregivers of school-aged children and people between the ages of 55 and 64. There's, there's elimination of enrollment for certain immigrants who are not citizens or don't have a green card, and there's a permanent freeze on the actual, like, you know, basically the monthly amount you get in the program, right? We had started to adjust that for inflation during the Biden administration's COLA responses. They're freezing that now back at a level that's still largely inadequate. And then the last thing that the, the package includes is the $170 billion to accelerate deportation and detention agenda that you all, of course, have know well and have been experiencing the intensity of. So that's the, like, big-picture stuff. I want to talk about some of the details, and like we said, we'll take a few, we'll take a break on some of the few things. So I want to say what happened in the state budget first, because it happened first, is state leaders unfortunately, in some ways, in a way that feels almost preemptive, or not preemptive, still feel, feel sort of capitulating to what was about to come from the federal leaders, made some cuts to Medi-Cal in order to solve their budget shortfall. So they froze, particularly cuts for immigrant communities. So they froze new enrollment in Medi-Cal for undocumented adults ages 19 and older, so blocking back from healthcare for all, which we had just achieved in the last couple of years. They have three months, folks who want to enroll have three months left. This takes effect January 1st, 2026, and thereafter, they won't be enrolling anyone else in the program. They also, in a first move, first time of this kind of move, impose a new $30, $30 monthly premium or copay for certain immigrants here again, ages 19 to 59, that starts mid-next, or mid-2027, and they eliminated dental benefits for, in Medi-Cal for those same groups of immigrants. So very much, in some ways, is going to feel very much like what I'm going to tell you about at the federal level, unfortunately. There are also broader effects, not just to immigrant communities in Medi-Cal. As Supervisor Mitchell knows well, we fought for years to eliminate asset limits in these kinds of programs. State leaders reinstated those, some of those asset limits in the budget they just enacted, and while the dollar amounts are pretty high, it's still a dangerous door to have reopened, particularly as they have to deal with future, future federal cuts. They also end coverage of
His asset, that's not a house.
Right. Having a car, a retirement account. Yeah, yeah. Ending coverage for weight loss drugs like Ozempic and Wegovy, which the state's doing for cost reasons. I think most state leaders would tell you they're not doing it based on ethical or moral considerations, but the, the reality of the decision means we're making a decision as a state about who's deserving to access weight loss drugs based on your income. And it imposes new step therapy protocols and prior authorization to access certain drugs starting in January 2026. So these are all sort of cost-cutting, cutting measures the state's put in effect. I'm not going to go into a lot of this. I do want to state quickly, just briefly, on the managed care tax, but there's been a, as you all are probably aware, there's been a continued practice under Governor Newsom of peeling away some of the Prop 56 dollars and the MCO tax dollars to help solve the state budget shortfalls in recent years. Those are dollars that are supposed to be going to reimbursing providers. That practice continues again in the budget that they just enacted. It's a practice that they won't be able to continue going forward because the federal cuts that are coming are going to restrict their use of the MCO tax in a way that's actually going to create additional budget pressures for the state, right? They're not going to be able to draw on the Prop 56 and MCO tax as a sort of slush fund for the general fund. Good news on the front of behavioral health is that the state leaders protected all of the investments that had been made in recent years, and where there's been multiple years of some significant new investments in behavioral health programs. And so it's good to see that state leaders held the line on those and that they weren't subject to cuts. Now, on the health side, on the federal front then, what happened in the reconciliation bill or HR1 is we get a whole new set of cuts, particularly new burdensome red tape in the form of work requirements, particularly targeting the Obamacare or the ACA expansion population, forcing them to prove they're working, looking for work, participating in training programs. The estimate is that about 3.5 million Californians could be losing coverage if they're unable to meet those work requirements. In addition to that, there's a requirement of additional eligibility checks every six months. Right now, the policy is a year. So it's just creating another bureaucratic hurdle for folks to jump over in order to maintain their benefits. And then they're excluding certain immigrants from Medicaid and the Children's Health Insurance Program. Here again, this feels very much like what we were just about, the, you know, what would happen at the state level, like the two things are connected. All of a sudden, we're telling folks that immigrants who were previously eligible for programs like Asylees and refugees and temporary protected status and DACA recipients, and that, like, suddenly they're not available for programs they've previously been accessing. So that's, that's the, sort of some of the big-picture side of the federal Medi-Cal cuts. There are cuts beyond that in healthcare. So if you look at the marketplace arena, for us, Covered California, there had been these enhanced premium tax credits that had been helping people who couldn't, who not access, can't, who make just a little bit too much money to access Medi-Cal, but it's still, but, but for whom Covered California is an expensive program. There were tax credits that were put in place that allowed that population just above to be better able to access and afford Covered California. They did not extend those. We weren't expecting them to extend, extend them, but that means that these folks come at the end of 2025, lose their tax credits. That's nearly 2 million folks who'll be facing higher premiums and up to That's nearly 2 million folks who'll be facing higher premiums and up to 400,000 estimated, we think, could lose coverage. And Covered California just came out with the new state and federal, or state and regional rate increases today. You can find out more there. They made some other changes also here to eliminate access to Covered California to some immigrants who had previously had access, including refugees, folks with visas, trafficking survivors and DACA recipients. We think about 112,000 folks are in danger of losing coverage through, through those changes. So also cuts on the marketplace side. Before I go on, then, on the SNAP and housing arena, I thought we'd stop, we thought, and take some questions, just because there's so much in the health arena, both at the federal and the state level.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
It feels to me like there's so much uncertainty or a lack of consistency or direction, you know, like on the federal level, like we don't really know what's going to happen with Medicaid. And I'm a physician, so I'm looking at how do we impact both mental health in my program as well as health? And there's a real threat to our, our LGBTQ population within my clinic. And there is a real threat, something I say here all the time about quality care versus settling for the least care. But it feels to me like that it, the uncertainty of how that goes forward, because things change in Washington, he changes his mind all the time. I mean, there's, there's, there's movement going forward, but there's still how it's going to be implied. I get a feeling that it's, there's a level of uncertainty. Maybe you could address that.
I, well, I think, I do think there's ambiguity about how the implementation happens, where we're, the state, state leaders aren't going to get guidance as fast. Like, I don't think they'll have the guidance they need from many federal agencies in order to, like, make urgent decisions on everything when they come back next week and by September 12th. But I don't, but I think there is certainty about what's in the bill, right? So like when they, I didn't even cover, like, some of it, but like, when they, you know, when they defund Planned Parenthood, that defunding is locked in, right? That's part of the cost structure.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, yeah.
So I think some of, you know, I think now, like, how they implement work requirements and what that looks like is, I think, a place where, like, we can say, oh, we think 3.5 million Californians are at risk of, but it may be that the implementation isn't as aggressive or assertive. Maybe there are things state leaders, maybe they give states some flexibility, you know, in some way. So I, you know, like, I think you're sort of, there's some of it that I think is certain, and then there's some of it that's like the details of the implementation. Yeah.
I would agree. I think, I think H R one is the law of the land, and I think what we tend to conflate are these executive orders, that he comes out with one and then changes his mind. But that's different, I think, than what we heard today in H R one. And I think, I chair the Health and Human Services Committee for CSAC, and so counties all over the state are planning according to H R one. It's the executive orders where municipalities are suing, the state's suing, that we may have some flexibility. But these dollars, according to the law of the land today, are gone. Yes.
That was a great presentation. I'll just point out that, like, you kind of highlighted the way the tap is turning off up here. But then what we're also finding on the ground is kind of more hand-tying in the, in the operationalizing of these benefits. So examples linked to the executive orders, but, you know, another level of screening for immigration status in SNAP, like, again and again, to kind of restrict the benefit access at every point. And then another newer, interesting thing we're seeing is in some of our grant agreements, new language around, you know, funding can be taken back at any time if it doesn't align with the agenda. So it's not a given that it's a contract. And then also really concerning language about, for some, not HHS funding yet, but other federal sources around cooperation with immigration enforcement in a totally unrelated space, like air quality monitoring. So, I mean, I just think, like, that was a really great, I think, summary of, like, that top-line restriction, but then there's just, like, hits at every level in how it's operationalized.
Yeah. And I appreciate that comment because there's, I'm trying to cover a pretty high level. Up here, there's a whole bunch of other details, and we've got it covered in a document on our website, and it's kind of depressing to read. But, but there is a apology, apologies for the editorial comment, but there is a mean-spiritedness that is contained within some of the details about, like, their targeting of immigrants and their targeting of what they think of as DEI-related efforts.
Yes, and linking that again to DEI, like, right. So then, you know, if you accept the funding for one piece but are practicing, you know, good care in another area, like around, you know, gender non-conforming youth, for example, the funding is off the table.
Right. And the clawback fear.
Right.
Right.
Any other questions?
All right. So this is economic security, but I'm sort of using it to talk about SNAP or CalFresh and the housing side of it. And there's not as much to say on housing, but I'll, so I'll focus mainly on SNAP. But on the state level, as Ophelia mentioned earlier, there, there were some things that were mainly protected, which is a good thing. The planned expansion of the California Food Assistance Program for undocumented adults 55 and older was protected and was not triggered, subject to a trigger-off. Although I do want to say I worry about things that have one-time funding and had been previously proposed when the legislature has to come back or take these issues up next year. Their one-time investment in cal food also protected. The removing some barriers within CalWorks was, which has been planned, and a multi-year effort in the works also protected. Federal dollars for domestic violence victims were subject to not be renewed, so the state added 100 million back, which is what they've been putting into that effort for several years. And, and while there weren't any new sort of cash assistance investments, they protected the ones that they've made previously, which in a third year of a budget shortfall shows a commitment to those we think is a good sign. On the federal side, of course, then, we know we're facing the SNAP cuts. So I had said earlier, the 15% cost shift to states, about $1.8 billion in California, the administrative costs, the time limits for caregivers, blocking enrollment for certain immigrants, and the frozen level of the, like, monthly aid that folks get are the kind of key things to understand there. So not, you know, that's, that's something state leaders have to face. That's stuff that actually takes, except for the cost shifts, which have to take place next year, that's all stuff that starts to go in effect right away. Like, whereas, like, the Medi-Cal work requirements have some time before they start to get implemented. The SNAP stuff starts right away, as soon as they can sort of get the implementation language out and the restrictions for immigrants start to take effect right away. On the housing side, or housing and homelessness, in the state budget, the governor hadn't proposed to do anything new or any new additional funding in May. The legislature was able to negotiate getting money back in, although I would note, the key part of this is the HAP program, which are grants to cities and counties for their homelessness efforts. The state put 500 million back in, but it said for '20s, '26, '27, not for '20s, '25, '26. So there's really no new funding available in the next fiscal year. This is a place where I also worry about how they then respond as they start to deal with some of the federal cuts, because this would be an easy place to pull back, because it's sort of a out-year commitment. And they put 200 million plus into homelessness and housing programs for specific populations, like folks with disabilities, and continue to put money into the governor's encampment resolution grants. So there was a little bit of stuff in the state budget. There's also some additional funding in the low-income housing tax credit program and some other, you know, sort of funding, one-time funding efforts that the legislature negotiated back in, plus the new SEQA streamlining and administrative reforms that were included at the state level. There's not as much to say at the housing level, and I guess we can be glad that H R one didn't try to go after housing programs quite as much. But it does include some changes to the low-income housing tax credit program. This tends to have bipartisan support, so the, so there are sort of changes there that happen. So the state level has put some more money in. There are some federal changes that seem not too horrible. And then there are some corporate, but there are things to understand, though, that, like, the reason that folks put money into the low-income housing tax credit program is that they're essentially using their profit and then getting a sort of tax credit for putting money into low-income housing, so it's sort of a way to reduce their tax bill. What's happening with the tax cuts in H R one is some of that tax liability simply won't be there, so we may see some reduction in the federal commitment on the low-income housing tax credit side, just because of how that works. I'll stop there, in terms of the housing and SNAP stuff.
Questions?
All right. So then let's just say a little bit about the tax side of this, since that's all a part of it. So the way to understand the four and a half trillion dollars in tax cuts for individuals and corporations over the next 10 years, or the way that we begin to look at them is to understand a few things, that, you know, the top 1% get $1 trillion of the benefits. In California, the top 1% will receive an annual average tax cut of $35,000. The bottom 20% will receive a tax cut of about $100. That tax cut for those folks will easily be offset by what they would lose in their healthcare coverage, their food assistance, or just the effects of tariff policies on the prices of goods that they'll be purchasing. The, the bill also excluded 2 million California children and millions of children across the country who were in the lowest-income households from being eligible for the child tax credit. So you probably saw folks who voted for H R one saying a lot about, oh, we're extending the child tax credit and expanding the child tax credit. They did, except for everyone but the lowest-income households.
That makes perfect sense, Chris.
Right. They deny that child tax credit also to U.S. citizen, children who don't have, who don't have, who have a parent who don't have a social security number. And then they, they deny that in that same way for people with social security numbers, such as, you know, with things having to do with tax credits for college students. So there, that's the sort of federal side in terms of what happens on the tax front. Like I said, there's not much that happened on the state front, on the tax side. So let's just say a little bit about what comes next. As we talked about, state leaders come back next week, they can do some cleanup work through trailer bill language. You might see them do some more aggressive work around things that happen early in the implementation of H R one. That remains to be seen. There was some early chatter among the governor and state leaders about holding a special session separate from the August-September period to deal with the effects of H R one. I honestly think that with the redistricting fight, that the governor and state leaders are now championing, it's very unlikely they would be doing parallel special sessions, one on redistricting and one on H R one. So I think it's probably less likely. So I think it's most likely that the place where you will see more focused work on the response to H R one will be when they come back to, in January, for the proposed 2026, '27 budget. And I think part of the reason for that is the big scary numbers are in the Medi-Cal space, but most of that implementation happens in 2027, and they'll feel like they have some time. And I think there's a worry about that. There's not as much time from an implementation perspective as you might think. But I think that that timeline and where they are now is just the reality that it is. So that's the end of what I have to share. Like I said, I wish I had better news to share with you all today, but I really appreciate the chance to be here and to hopefully continue to work with you all to try to offset the effects of this for Los Angelenos and for Californians, to work with state leaders who I think need to take bolder action to make sure we present a different vision for what this community needs, what our state needs, and what the country could look like in terms of how we respond to H R one. Thank you.
Two quick questions before I open up to commissioners. In terms of the rules, they can have two simultaneous special sessions, but I hadn't thought about the big announcement today and that work and that how that can rule very likely kind of take all the air out of the room.
Yeah. And that's-
Come back, go just do one.
Yeah, and that's my individual sort of political landscape read, and it's not my organization's, but I think the scale of how, of what they have to respond to and H R one require is, cannot be done on the spending side. It has to have a revenue conversation. They don't have consensus on that by any means yet. I don't, I think it's unlikely they have a tax policy conversation at the same time they're having a redistricting conversation, even though you're right, technically speaking, they can have multiple special sessions going at the same time.
You know, what strikes me every time I see the presentations is the reality of the accumulative impact on our family, friends, and neighbors. And I would go so far as to say, Chris, that the federal, you know, policies are racist. But when you think about the, you know, it's the children and the families we serve who will be hit by the SNAP cut, the Medi-Cal cut, subsidized childcare, the limited availability, as I just learned from my previous event today, of housing vouchers. So it's our most vulnerable families that are just going to be picked to death. It's that accumulative impact, which, as you said, will bring harm to people.
One question. Thank you, Chris. Great presentation. I was very concerned when I was tracking. We do a lot of work in partnership with the county during the tax season to encourage low-income tax filers to, to focus on claiming the earned income tax credit and the child tax credit. I didn't hear your presentation of there was anything that the state did to absorb the loss of the federal child tax credit. And my second question, I think, is for us, if there is a role for first five to play in working with someone in the state legislature to create a universal child tax credit program for California young children? Because there isn't one. There's one for foster youth. We have a California EITC, which is great, but I don't think we have in our state a tax credit program for children zero to five.
We do, actually. We have a, but it's, it's sort of baked into the California Earned Income Tax Credit. So it's sort of a little different than the federal in a couple of ways. One is you have to be eligible for the EITC, and then if you have a child zero to five, you get $1,000 a year as a household. So it's pretty generous. We have to remember that our CalEITC only goes up to about $30,000 in income, so it cuts off pretty early. But it's designed to help the folks who are most low-income. The federal child tax credit goes up to the ages of 17, age of 17. I do think that there are things state leaders could do because of the omission of the lowest-income households from the federal tax credit, which is to take our young child tax credit and try to do something with that, or the CalEITC and do something with that. That costs money, and there are going to be lots of responses to H R one that are going to compete for money. So I, I think the tough part for state leaders will be, like, are we standing up some new food assistance effort in the state to backfill what's happening with SNAP? Are we trying to cover folks who are losing their healthcare on Medi-Cal? Are we building out a child tax credit? What can we afford? And then where do they find the money for that? So I, you know, I think, but it's completely feasible from a policy perspective, right? There's a pathway, there is a direct pathway for it.
And I, in fact, just add one more comment. I think what I remember from when the child tax credit at the federal level was a universal allocation for families across the country, we saw a drop in poverty by 40%. And I don't know the figures for SNAP off, just off memory, but I think that that was a compelling enough reason to maintain it, you know, at the federal level. And fortunately, that's not the case. But I hope that as we're looking at how to advocate and lift up, you know, proven investments, you know, that are really supporting households, that that is also something that we consider.
Yeah, 100% agree. We actually have the evidence sitting in front of us coming right out of COVID, that we can, we can cut child poverty in half. We can eliminate deep poverty if we just sustain the types of investments we made over just a couple of years.
That's a sobering comment. I think coupled with, CSAC's federal lobbyist said that these are the most draconian and the deepest cuts to Medicaid and SNAP since the inception of the program. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you. I had a question about, you know, H R one, we have H R one, and then we have, like, the president's proposed budget, and then also, like, what the Senate has, like, appropriations. And we're trying to read the tea leaves on, like, what is, because the Senate is actually more generous in certain, in certain areas than the president's budget. But like, I guess curious, like, your sense, like, we're trying to make us, like, a lot of projections for what some of our programs in public health will look like. Is your sense that probably it will end up looking kind of, because what we saw previously is it ends up looking like what the president had proposed? I'm just curious, like, what, how you think appropriations will play into this, because that's sort of our last hope for some of these programs?
So I, I, I hope I'm right about this, but I, I think- So, I, I hope I'm right about this, but I, I think it will end up closer to where the Senate is on appropriations, simply because a bunch of folks already had to take a tough vote, and it take, and they also need to get 10 votes from Democrats in order to move anything in appropriations, right? So, it's, they can't overcome the filibuster, in essence, and there are other things that can happen, you know, a federal budget process stuff, like cloture votes and things like that, that require extra votes. So, I think appropriations will end up closer to the Senate side. I think the worry that I have about the federal appropriation side is, is there'll probably be some brinksmanship about whether to let the government shut down or not, and that will be the card the president uses to try to force them in his direction. And the danger in that will be that the votes they need on the Democratic side might compromise on some things that result in some less-than-ideal cuts in order to get some, win back some other stuff on other fronts, so, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for this presentation. So, I want to, I appreciate that you acknowledge that this is mean-spirited, because it absolutely is. It's no secret that this administration frankly hates the state, because we do have the largest economy, we have the largest county by population right here, we have the most active ports, and we have the largest immigration population, and we make all of that work because of the people in this country. These cuts are not in any way meant to help this country at all. We know that, because it's going to lead to more people in emergency rooms because they don't have healthcare, more people, if they're open, more people unhoused, including children and the elderly, and more people in prison, because there's a dotted line from, it's, it's all connected, right? So, I'm curious to know from your perspective, you look at these numbers all the time, you're analyzing this data that is, as it's coming out. You mentioned revenue. What, what do you think is the response that this country, this county, needs to take in order to push back on some of this?
Yeah, you know, I, I appreciate the question, and we're not being, I think it's not being asked enough, and it's not being publicly asked enough, and it's shocking to me, because the Trump administration and Republicans in Congress gave state and local leaders the pathway on the revenue front. Four-and-a-half trillion dollars in tax cuts, the majority of which go to high-wealth corporations and high-wealth individuals. The simple answer is to clawback some of that revenue. The state has more ability to do that than you all do at the local level, because your hands are more tied in terms of, you know, you have sales taxes, but not property taxes, you don't have income taxes. So, the state, I think, has the primary responsibility to be saying, "We should be raising taxes on corporations, we should be, you know, by 2030, we have to renew the high-income tax brackets that were passed in 2012 and 2016, extended in 2016. We ought to be looking about how high-income households are benefiting from the Trump tax cuts." So, those paths seem to me are sitting right in front of us, but what I'm encountering is state leaders don't want to have conversations about the broad-based taxes that are sitting in front of them, and are essentially the only option, right? There's a little bit of a scanning about for the sort of silver bullet, towards of, like, there must be something we're not taxing that we could tax that's, and there are some things. There are things like data transactions, you know, parts of the economy that are less taxed, there are some things you could do on wealth, but I don't think state leaders can get to the scale of this without actually just reversing some of what just happened in H.R. 1 at the state level.
Because it is a transfer of wealth.
Right. The largest transfer of wealth we've seen in history.
Exactly. So, we have to transfer some of that back. And, and I know there's been efforts in the past, like, I think it was the split role, and, and people were confused by some of those things, because it's like, oh, it's going to affect, like, the, the average person, and it, and it was never intended to.
As hard as we tried to make it clear.
I know. We got to try again. Thank you for answering my question.
Thanks for the question.
There's a New York Times article, I don't know if you've seen it, maybe three weeks ago now, written by Jennifer Polka, the author of Recoding America, and she talks about this concept of intellectual disruption, where when we have situations like this, which is hard for me to acknowledge, because this isn't a result of a recession, this is a result, this is a manufactured crisis. They made a choice to benefit one small group at the expense of the rest of us. But that, you know, what government shouldn't do is what we typically do, which are these across-the-board cuts. You know, the county has, you know, asked our department heads to come back with curtailment plans, up to eight-and-a-half percent, maybe more to come, but that we have to talk about this intellectual disruption, where we are smart and strategic in terms of what we cut, because the across-the-board will have the disproportionate impact on this same population I've talked about, who are going to suffer at the hands of H.R. 1. So, it's, we have to think different about how we close this gap.
I really agree with that, and I, as a primary care provider, I, and I look at potential across-the-board, you know, cuts, and I really would like to see leadership look at not cutting as much for the essential needs of the people we take care of. In my population, it's primarily minority, poor immigrant families, and like, that's what I was trying to comment on, is that people say, just, you know, wait and see what happens. And I'm, I would like to plan now for how do we meet the needs of the families we're taking care of with high-quality healthcare? So, what is it we don't need? Like, you know, how do we, how do we control those costs versus cutting direct services to a population that needs excellent care? And, and that's what we're working on within my program, which is very, very hard, because there is the dynamic of a percentage cross, you know, across-the-board cuts, without thinking about, for me, and child abuse, like, they get abused at 2:00 in the morning. If you close all the services after 10:00 at night, you're going to have a lot of kids that, that are in trouble on both sides. And so, let's not cut that. Let's figure out how do we cover that with what we have. I, I agree with you. I think this is a, it's just the most draconian thing I've ever seen in my lifetime, and I'm just trying to identify, how do I personally respond with my program to make sure that kids don't die and that families don't lose their kids? I mean, how do we do that? And that's a very, very difficult question, because it's personal.
It is.
And I, I would ask everybody in my system to look at where they may have to work harder.
Or work differently.
Right. And, and collaborate differently, rather than protecting the status quo the way it is, because it's not that way anymore. And so, you know, that was my point, was that I get the feedback of just wait and see what happens after, and it's going to, you know, we don't know what he's going to do tomorrow. I'll give you, I'll give you an example. It's like, shut down my, my LGBTQ clinic completely. There's still those same kids in foster care, and my response is, I'll disappear them into a primary care clinic. I'll still make sure they have the care, but I, I'm not going to insist that you shut me down, because it can't be about my, where I sit, it has to be about where the kids sit. And that's what I'm saying, is we have to, I would like to see that be part of this county plan, certainly part of this, Commissioner, that we look at different ways to spend that money so that kids are not impacted as much.
I agree with you, and I think the harsh reality, given the mean-spirited nature of our federal government, that some of those actions may be apparent to you and some may not, because we may have to move in a space where we're doing the things, but not talking about them.
That's right.
Just saying.
And I think it's, it's such a
Unbelievable.
Ethnic poverty, language, immigration.
Absolutely. It's racist.
Yeah.
Thank you, commissioners. We are a bit over time, so is it okay if we close here?
Please do.
And I, I do want to thank Chris. Chris is getting ready for a well-deserved sabbatical and was not taking any external requests and meetings, and he prioritized this meeting. So, to the point of how we get through this time together, you know, he prioritized coming at a time where he is focused internally, and so our deepest gratitude and appreciation, and we will continue to track all of the health, safety net programs, early care, early learning programs, and think about the most vulnerable, and think about the implications, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
And so, if I may just get all in your business, I'm hoping this is one of those foundation-sponsored sabbaticals where you're paid to be still and think?
We're working on that.
Okay. Because having never had the privilege of taking one of those, I look to those who do, because I, we expect you to come back and have all the answers for us, and we're just all going to hold hands and hold it all together till you come back with the answer. Yeah, I hope that comes to fruition. You certainly are deserving of it.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
So, we will have to make up some time, hoping that we can do that on the final, the last presentation, since we built in more time for that one. So, thank you. So, turning it back to you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think we're now moving into Agenda Item 6, which is the Federal Strategy, Part 1, Lessons Learned on Protecting Head Start.
And while Amato sets it up, I will welcome our guest speakers. So, as we've been discussing, the federal administration has placed significant strain on childcare and early learning and Head Start programs, whether it's freezing or withholding funds, issuing executive actions aimed at eliminating eligibility for immigrant children, or proposing cuts to vital programs like the Child Care Access Means Parents in School and the Preschool Development Grants. This is an issue that affects thousands of children in L.A. County. We're grateful to partner with Laco and our grantee partners as they hold steady, monitor, and understand the impacts of the federal actions, what the, what the impacts will be on working families, and as they work tirelessly to protect access to early learning for our most vulnerable children. With regards to our policy agenda, as you heard from Ofelia, we have been doing state advocacy to expand full access to, to get the state to follow through on its commitment to the 200,000 childcare spots, and then locally with our partners to make sure that families can access those spots, childcare spots that are available. And we're also, you know, really, we are also really clear that as I shared when we opened, while we're getting pulled in so many directions, we have system leaders, our two commissioners, Dr. Marisela Ramirez, Chief Education Officer for L.A. County's Office of Education, and Luis Baltista, Executive Director of Head Start and Early Learning Division for L.A. County's Office of Education. Together, they have been diligently working during the shifting Head Start landscape to make sure that L.A. County children have access to early learning and that they are flourishing during this difficult time. So, they will share about the strategy and lessons learned and insights for this next period, and we have time at the end of their presentation for conversation discussion.
And Madam Chair, my apologies for interrupting. I just want to confirm for the record that there are no public comments for Item 5 before we proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forgive me for not calling for it. I fell short.
And that back over to Commissioner Baltista.
Well, thank you. I'd like to start by thanking Chair Mitchell, Carla, and the commission for having us here today to be able to present the work we are doing to lift up the voices of children and families in L.A. County. And today's presentation, we're going to be covering the shifting Head Start landscape, and we're going to be focusing on the federal administration's thinking on Head Start, on some of the state and federal partner response, the impact or the potential impact to L.A. County, and also what are some of the best practices and strategies that we have employed at Laco to utilize, to be able to help with the situation. So, I just want to begin with a clear commitment from Laco that we stand with all children and families, and we have, we are unwavering in our dedication to placing children at the center of all educational policy decisions, and we stand against any measure that might unfairly impact children due to factors outside of their control. Our, our focus is on safeguarding children's fundamental rights to education and overall well-being, and ensuring there are no unnecessary barriers that hinder their development or access to opportunities. And this commitment reflects a child-first philosophy that guides all actions and policies within Laco, emphasizing the importance of creating supportive environments where every child can thrive regardless of their circumstances. And I'll hand it over to Commissioner Baltista.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez, and good afternoon, everyone. I just want to reassure Supervisor Mitchell that while some of this may look familiar based on last week's presentation, we do have new information to share with you all today. A little bit of background on Head Start, most of us know, of course, that this was first established in 1965 as part of President Johnson's War on Poverty. It provides comprehensive, high-quality, early childhood education, as well as health, nutrition, and family support services to children that are experiencing homelessness, children that come from foster care, and certainly prioritizing income-eligible families. In the 60-year history of Head Start, it's important to note that we have never been required to document the immigration status of a child or family as a condition for enrollment, and that has now recently changed. So, we'll get a little bit into that and other changes for Head Start. But I also want to emphasize for you that in the 60 years the program has been around, we have served more than 40 million children. Currently, every year, we get to serve 750,000 children at the national level, and that includes pregnant women. There are over 1,600 local agencies that are delivering services across this country, and one of the unique aspects of Head Start, of course, is that it is a federal-to-state, or federal-to-local, rather, funding model. So, the dollars don't go through the states. They come directly from Office of Head Start to programs like Laco and other grantees in order first to provide services at the community level. 90% of children that participate in Head Start meet or exceed school readiness goals, and that is a key aspect of what we focus on when we're working with children and families in our programs. At the Los Angeles County Office of Education, we serve more than 7,000 children and families every year with an annual budget of $200 million. We are one of about a dozen grantees here in L.A. County, so altogether, we serve more than 21,000 children and families in Head Start and early Head Start, and that translates to a federal funding level of about $500 million here in L.A. County alone. In California, the reach is even greater, of course, where we get to serve more than 80,000 children and families with an annual funding level for California of $1.3 billion. And nationally, as I mentioned earlier, we currently serve 750,000 children with an annual funding level of $12 billion. I want to share with you a little bit in terms of what's been happening with Head Start just in the past seven months. As we know, in January, we experienced an administration transition, and right from the onset, there were 46 executive orders issued by the president, many of which directly impacted programming for Head Start. We also saw a funding freeze announced within a week of the new administration coming in, and that caused a lot of confusion and panic across Head Start programs. That funding freeze eventually was lifted, but it did leave quite a bit of uncertainty for programs in terms of what was to come. We saw in February the appointment of RFK Jr. as the new Secretary for Health and Human Services, and at the same time, we saw a directive from the Administration for Children and Families, basically Children and Families, basically informing all Head Start programs that no federal funds would be allowed for diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. There was no definition of what constitutes a DDI initiative. There was really no guidance beyond just the directive, right, that this was not restricted. And in March, we saw the secretary visit his first Head Start program, which ultimately resulted in quite positive media coverage, and so we felt that maybe there was a slight shift for things to improve. But as you can see, in April, there were quite a number of actions that impacted Head Start programs, including, of course, administration transitions within Office of Head Start. On April 1st, five of the 10 regional offices across the country were closed, and all of the federal staff was placed on administrative leave. Those offices included Boston, Chicago, San Francisco, New York, and Seattle. Our regional office, of course, was based in San Francisco, and the federal staff there were the ones that supported Head Start programs like LACO and other grantees, not only in California, but in Nevada, Arizona, Hawaii, and Outer Pacific areas. With the loss of that federal staff, programs were left with no one to contact in terms of questions about funding, about actions that were still pending approvals, and those transitions took some time to fully establish who was now responsible to provide that support. We also experienced during that time funding concerns regarding an initial draft fiscal year 2026 budget that indicated $0 for Head Start funding, in essence, eliminating the Head Start program. There were operational shifts also taking place during the month of April, and that really underscored this issue of the closure of regional offices, and really trying to understand how the remaining federal staff would absorb an increased amount of work and provide the kind of supports that programs really need to navigate, as you may know, just a number of regulations, right, and requirements that make part, are part of the Head Start program. All of this really accelerated the need for a call to public action and public awareness around what was impacting Head Start. And I'll dive into what some of those actions are in just a moment. But let me also point out that there were additional actions in May, June, and July of this year. We saw finally a draft budget of fiscal year 2026 that included $163 billion in federal cuts, but it did not call for the elimination of Head Start. So we were grateful at that point to see funding come through, although it was flat-funded. So it remained at the same levels as the previous year. The same time in May, Head Start celebrated its 60th year in existence, and so we used that opportunity to engage in a national campaign with other programs to not only celebrate the legacy of Head Start, but also to elevate public awareness, to honor alumni and champions, and to highlight the program's continued impact. In June, there was continued enforcement around enrollment and requiring programs to make sure that we were meeting all regulatory requirements. And then in July, as we know, HR1 was signed into law on Independence Day, which included deep cuts to Medicaid and SNAP, as we've been hearing today, and that created concerns for the potential loss of aid for families and staff that are relying on those programs, as well as an increased demand on Head Start and a destabilization of community support systems. In July, we also saw that HHS, Health and Human Services, announced that it would bar undocumented immigrants from programs like Head Start and others by reclassifying these programs as federal public benefits. The reclassification of Head Start as a federal public benefit, again, does not come with any formal guidance as of yet, so programs are still awaiting instruction as to how to implement this particular latest rule change. So I'll talk a little bit about that because it is the most recent example of what's been shifting in Head Start. On July 10th, HHS issued that new notice reclassifying Head Start as a federal public benefit, and of course, what this means is that now only U.S. citizens and qualified individuals such as lawful permanent residents, refugees, or asylees are eligible to apply and to enroll to Head Start. This is a good example of how quickly, right, policy shifts and the response to these policy shifts take place. The announcement was done on July 10th. It was formally published in the Federal Register on July 14th, and then a week later, a coalition of states and associations filed a lawsuit, in essence, challenging this reclassification, and that coalition included California. So based on that particular lawsuit, a week or so after that, the U.S. District Court in Rhode Island issued a pause on implementing this rule, which is good news. But that pause was originally put into place to last until September 3rd. It most recently was extended to September 10th, and we're still awaiting, again, formal instruction or notification or an understanding of what's to happen after September 10th. In summary, what we're seeing, of course, is a number of changes in Head Start. New eligibility requirements that are now mandating proof of citizenship or legal status, which, of course, we know will affect enrollment processes. We're seeing federal funding that's either stagnated or possibly decreasing. That is, of course, going to pose challenges for program sustainability. There is also heightened scrutiny now on how well programs are performing and the outcomes that they are achieving, emphasizing accountability, which, of course, is a good thing, but amidst all of these strains, right, it will become harder and harder to meet those outcomes. We know that community needs are growing. More families are facing housing and food insecurity and mental health concerns. And lastly, recruiting and retaining qualified staff has really become increasingly difficult, which, of course, we know impacts the service of services, the quality of services, rather. And what this means in terms of impacts to programs is that we will likely see enrollment declines as children and families struggle to meet new eligibility requirements, which, of course, will directly impact program reach and program effectiveness. We are concerned about the funding gaps because costs continue to rise and funding levels remain flat, again exacerbating financial strain. There is growing community distrust, especially as we look at implementing some of these new rule changes, with families potentially becoming wary of government data collection, which, of course, will hinder their participation and cooperation. Another area, of course, of great concern is the impact to the workforce. Due to the increased stress and uncertainty around policy changes, staff morale and retention will be impacted. And lastly, we know that quality risks emerge from having fewer staff and reduce opportunities for training and technical assistance, which, again, compromise service delivery and outcomes. So how have we been responding here at LACO, and this is something that I know is consistent with many other programs across LA County, California, and the country? We have been actively engaging in coalition advocacy by collaborating with key organizations such as the National Head Start Association and the Head Start California Association to help amplify our collective voice. We are also sharing data-driven impact stories with policymakers and media to help us demonstrate the real world benefits of our initiatives, making a compelling case for ongoing support. We participate in public comment periods on regulatory changes to influence policies that affect our work, and in fact, the latest rule change around immigration status, public comment closed yesterday. LACO, of course, participated in submitting public comments. We also had members of Congress, both the House and the Senate, submit public comments. So we know that there was a lot of interest in really providing feedback to this latest rule change. And then lastly, of course, we are looking to maintain transparent communication with stakeholders through issue briefs and town halls, ensuring that everyone is staying informed and involved in these ongoing developments. It's only been seven months, but it certainly feels much longer, and you can see from some of these changes, by the way, these are not all the changes, but some of these changes really are having deep impact to Head Start programs across the country. I'll stop there and see what questions we have.
May I?
Yes, please.
I wanted to thank the Commissioner and Luis for joining us. We've been, First Five LA has been trying to analyze what strategies actually work with this administration, and this is a really phenomenal example of strategies that have worked. So when there was the threats to cut to Head Start earlier in the year, there was a lot of narrative work done by Washington State and other states, and LACO headed a lot of that. So we believe the cuts would have been deeper had we not heard those narratives, those town halls, and really having our elected, federal elected officials hear some of this. So I wanted to highlight that as one strategy that we will be looking at as a federal response. And the second one, we hear it often, the lawsuits. The lawsuits really do work with this administration to address at least the urgent, immediate response. So again, we'll be looking to partner with legal entities on some of the issues that are being challenged, that are challenging the services that families were served. So just really wanted to say thank you because it is a light, at least in some of the things that we're hearing, and those two things we're looking at more deeply internally.
When you say "we," First Five LA or First Five statewide? Who's the "we"?
Really, so several. So there are First Five, First Five California is looking at some of this as we look at immigration, and then First Five LA has been working with philanthropic partners locally to see how do we make sure we have a unified narrative on some of these issues. So thank you for clarifying that, a few partners.
Beautiful. Questions?
Thank you. This is very depressing, but I am curious, how are you communicating these changes to families that are currently enrolled or potential families that are interested in enrolling?
Sure. That's a great question. Because of the lack of formal guidance and instruction on the latest rule change, right, regarding immigration status, and because of the current pause that we have in place, we are not changing any of our enrollment eligibility criteria at this point in time. So we're welcoming all families who are interested, right, to apply and to allow us to work with them, to enroll them. We know that the agreement reached by the court in Rhode Island will allow programs that are exempted through this period, right, to not have to go back either. So, you know, we won't be verifying if and when that does become a requirement for us to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you again for this presentation. And I guess I'm just wondering, myself and Commissioner Segala and some very, Commissioner McCroskey and others, we work in higher education levels. So I want to, I'm just kind of curious, what are some things that you need from us? How can we support you and how can we get our students involved? Because I, this is such a very big issue, and I think sort of the, the scope I'm looking at it from is, why am I going to ask my students to work in your programs when they are potentially at risk? And so I don't want to go to that, on that, in that rabbit hole. I want to go on the rabbit hole of, or the, on the space of, this is still a very necessary and needed program that has been in existence for 60 years, and we want it to continue. And so how can I, what can we do to support you and how can we communicate that or continue to communicate that to our prospective teachers in the workforce? Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to help focus the attention on the positive impact that programs like Head Start have, right, both in the short and long term. We know that for children that benefit from participation in Head Start, right, they are school-ready first and foremost by the time they get into kindergarten, but the impact of that participation also extends beyond that first year of school, right? We see higher graduation rates from high school. We see higher rates of college participation, right, and college graduation for Head Start children. So I think it's really emphasizing, right, the importance of that, and really not losing sight of the fact that it is a two-generation program, right? So we get to work not only with children, but with families. And one of the big pieces that comes out of Head Start participation is that families, caregivers learn to properly advocate for their children, right, how to navigate that sort of K-12 system, right, and really ensure that their children are receiving all of the supports and benefits that they need as they go through an academic career. And so for someone that's interested in supporting, right, a child's overall development, right, at an early stage, but really supporting a family unit, right, with understanding how to navigate a school system, I think this is one of those areas where, you know, we would want to see them fully engaged.
And if I can add to that, also, I mean, it's always helpful to have partners in the public campaign when there are letters to Congress and other initiatives that we have as well. And if you also ask your students if they are Head Start alumni, we'd love to connect with them because we'd love to capture their stories and share their narratives as we continue with this work.
Thank you for the presentation. I think that the profound impact that Head Start has is really not even documented as much as we need to, but I know early intervention is a huge function. Also, as we're looking at child abuse prevention, parent education is really important, too. So the impact is not only on the, and to eliminate immigrant families from that, where they can use the education and early intervention is just really horrible. So thank you for having the courage to stand forward. And I know that Commissioner Cortez and I, we do educate on those areas as well. So I know from my summer classes, I had discussions on that. I teach online in summer, and so we could really get some records going. So I think it's important that we get the information, but also that it's disseminated throughout the communities because of the power of Head Start. And again, I can't really talk enough about the early intervention component to it. So thank you very much for your hard work, both of you, and again, presenting to us.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you for this presentation, specifically looking at the strategic partnerships and advocacy. I have a very specific question, because I know that there can be, the program can be backfilled through philanthropic donations and local funders. Knowing the impact, the positive impact that Head Start has on the students, a child's TK through 12 through college experience, through life, there's a direct benefit to public education supporting early Head Start. And we know they do, but sometimes it operates in silos. You have like the early childcare and education in one group, and then you have TK through 12 in a separate group, and sometimes there's not a lot of collaboration or communication. And one bridge that, just right off the top of my head, is local ed foundations. Most school districts have them. They work really hard to supplement where the state can't fill the needs. Is there any coalition building in that space where this can be made plain to those local donors and parents who want to see their schools thrive, but also see the value in investing in students who haven't even stepped onto their campuses yet? But we know that that will have a long-term positive impact on that school district, the success rates, the graduation rates, like is there any coalition building there with ed foundations?
Do you want to add?
We smiled because we were actually just having this conversation, right, like this continuum of education from zero to 16 and connecting all of those pieces. There are some coalitions already in LA County that work on bridging these gaps, bringing these groups together, and there's continued work to do with that. As a matter of fact, just last week, we hosted a, we called it a movement, but Professional Development Rally Unified, about 1,500 educators, not just TK, but also like their early childhood educators together, right, to bring them together to work on that seamless continuum of learning. And so there is that now, your point, Commissioner McBride, around philanthropy, right? I think that's an excellent opportunity that we could definitely explore further. Luis, I'm not sure if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, one, we have as a strategic goal for this project period exactly this, right, sort of a... Sort of a bridging the early childhood education world with TK-12, right, and really helping to understand how we develop one continuum of learning and support. There is early exploration around private dollars, right, supporting these efforts. There is a foundation at LACO, and we know foundations at districts, so I think we can really certainly lean into that more, right, as we go through this project period to see how we can leverage those supports.
Yeah, thank you for exploring that, because, and it is a hard sell sometimes, because I sit on the Culver City Ed Foundation, and we wrestle within that space about the conversations about what do we want to fund, you know, that's going to benefit students who are in our classrooms right now? How much do we want to reserve for students who are coming in? And sometimes the donors just want to see that, those dollars going to their students who are in seats right now. So the, the message and the storytelling is going to be really critical, because that's where we can get people to change their mindset and broaden their understanding of how their dollars can actually benefit their students right now, but also students who are coming in. And most school districts do have these ed foundations, and they are mostly altruistic in looking to build the capacity of that school district. So if there's any way I can support the work you're doing, and I would also say with PTAs, you know, they're not just selling cupcakes. They are the largest and oldest advocacy organization in the country's history, and they do push for legislation changes and policies that impact schools. But they also are a good connector and good at telling that story. So I think right now, we need all hands on deck, but on the, on the same thing. Like, we need the hands on deck, but all together to make this possible, so thank you.
Thank you for those suggestions. Thank you.
Can I? Yes, Commissioner.
You know, I mean, I look at this from the standpoint of the, again, the, those individuals are going to benefit from the tax cuts, our in-school districts. And my, we're all very fortunate in this room that, you know, we are not in a, trying to struggle with whether we can make, pay, buy for food or pay rent. But we're, we're talking about, I see it as school districts or schools that have no, no advantage of that, like, they don't have extra money. They don't, they can't raise money from the people who are going to school there. They're dependent on outside funding coming in. I would really love to see, see, I think we're right now in such a crisis in this country that we have to take individual responsibility for others. And I'd like to see it be that, for example, my grandchildren go to a very, they live in an affluent community, and they go to a great school, and they're always raising money, and they have signs in their front yard saying, "I give to my school," right? And that's why they live there. But I would love to see that school district adopt a school in another part of this county or in a state that doesn't have that advantage and say, "We're sharing our resources. We've benefited by this huge tax cut that we now have. Let's share in this school district. Let's raise money for this school." I think we have to take individual responsibility for, for others, you know? And, and I know that's hard, because people always wait, it's called, what's my father used to say? Cheap grace. Somebody else will do it. I don't have to do it. I think we have to do it. So I would love to see us, I mean, I'm certainly willing to talk to my kids about this, in the school saying, "Yeah, we're, we have a tremendous ability to support our families and our kids and get people in to help the kids achieve." But in Compton, you know, the families are just struggling to put food on the table. You know, maybe we should share our largess with another school and begin to have people be responsible for others. I mean, I realize that sounds like, you know, my dad would say pie in the sky when you die, Astrid, but it's not. You know, I look at it as, we're in a state right now in this country where we have to be individually responsible, and we can't wait for, for the government, my government's not going to do it. They don't have it. So what are we going to do? So I mean, I'm suggesting that we, at First 5, look to try to build a, I don't know, because people ask me, "What do I do as an individual?" And I'm like, I know what I'm doing personally. Okay? But I'm saying, "What are you doing?" And, and begin to have that kind of a force, because then we impact policy as individuals, not as, I mean, I can look at Dr. Ramirez and say, "What are you doing as an agency?" But also, I want to look and, and say, "Well, you'll take care of that, right? I don't have to worry about that." Or I think we take personal, personal responsibility. I want to take personal responsibility.
Thank you, Commissioner Hager and Chair Mitchell. Is it okay if we end questions, comments now, so that we?
Absolutely.
Can move on. I, I do want to say the individual responsibility is important, and as Vice Chair Somerset, "All hands on deck" is what has been happening on the shifting landscape for Head Start since January. And it's quite remarkable that you have been able to maintain steady funding, even if it's flat, that it wasn't a cut, because it was, there was a zero in the leaked budget that said, after the closing of the regional office, that said that it was not being planned for, right? And so the 60 years of impact of Head Start as a public-funded program that has, for intergeneration, at an intergenerational level, impacted families across the country is something that, you know, when we think about embedding programs that are guaranteed for all, that we, as First 5, in terms of the work that we want to do with communities, is not only how do we, how, not only should we protect those programs, but when they begin to exclude and say that some children are not eligible, what do we do about that as First 5 LA? So we will continue to work closely with LACO and our partners across the state. And the zero to 16 is also another piece that we have to continue to prioritize when we talk about, you know, immediate, urgent, but also long-term vision. What role do we play as First 5 LA in really getting towards the birth to 16? Because that's how families look at their family unit and their children. They're not breaking up, you know, the needs of their children in phases. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think as, thank you for sharing with us kind of the strategy that, that was undertaken in terms of telling the story. And as Chris Haney told us earlier, we have to document the harm and, and begin to talk about how we build back when the time comes. So documenting the harm really helped with our effort to protect, particularly when you have several members of Congress who were former Head Start parents and Head Start students and all of the above. So thank you. Appreciate you, Commissioner. Thank you. Appreciate it. We're going to take a brief break.
And Madam Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Oh, and we're going to have a public comment, of course.
Before we take a break, I wanted to confirm there are no public comments for Item 6.
Ms. Bo, I know it's hard to keep me on track. I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Having confirmed that there's no public comment, we're going to take a brief break. We're a little behind schedule, but you've got good questions before we go into our final agenda, Item 8. So it's 3:31. Can I have everybody back at 3:40? 10 minutes. Thank you.
There he is. You all don't know, but we have a special relationship. He's my brilliant policy crush and his wife knows because I've told her. So don't think, don't think you, look at him blush him, look at him blush him, look at him blush him. Yes, it's this gentleman, Brian Stevenson, you know, I just, I have this policy crush. You all, okay, right, okay, you understand.
That is such good company.
Yes, and he says it all the time, it's great company. Thank you all for coming back. We're going to move on to agenda item number eight, our federal strategy part two, building equitable communities in an era of change and uncertainty. Aria?
Thank you, thank you Chair, and thank you Commissioners for all of your support to immigrant children and mixed status families, especially during the recent ICE raids and just the challenges that immigrant families are experiencing. First, five LA's active role in regards to immigration and just the impacts that just federal decisions are having on families with young children is really to make sure that our grantees feel our support and that they, we are actively supporting them. Therefore, our staff have been in very close coordination to understand what families are experiencing so that we can be responsive. And no surprise, families are afraid to leave their homes, even for childcare, for school, for medical appointments, for everyday social activities. There is heightened fear of deportation and family separation. One grantee in particular shared heartbreaking stories of parents being deported after attending their immigration hearing, which is what they are supposed to do, right? What they are asked to do. And there were a couple of weeks where two families in their community or in their population of families that they were working, were working with, were making the painful decision of voluntary deportation out of the fear of forced separation. Another grantee partner, Welcome Baby Home Visitation, continues to provide care and support to a 20-year-old resident and US citizen who was nine months pregnant when she was forcefully and brutally detained by ICE in Hawthorne City. Their commitment to her well-being through ongoing services is a powerful example of what it means to be a trusted resource organization in moments of crisis. And, you know, I want to just emphasize that it's not okay for us to allow or normalize racial profiling and the trauma that this expectant mother experienced and that many other families with young children continue to face. It's, these aren't isolated, as we all here know, they're not isolated incidents, they reflect a deeply trouble, troubling federal actions that demand both our attention and action. This is why we're being responsive to our grantee partners and we're being flexible where the contracts allowed, as Carla spoke to at the beginning and with your guidance, because families are in critical need of resources, cash aid specifically to meet basic needs, food, utilities, rent, transportation. So regarding partnerships, Carla also spoke already to the partnerships with the different municipalities and philanthropy. And, you know, we are looking at longer-term support that we can offer, especially when we see that the Know Your Rights, you know, guidance that organizations were sharing with families are no longer working during this time. So how do we support the capacity of legal advocacy organizations and update not just the Know Your Rights training and workshops, but also the support that they can offer families? And we will share more with you, but this presentation and your guidance will be really important in what we're able to consider and look at for future decisions. So this is why we invited Dr. Manuel Pastor to present. He's going to provide a broad federal landscape overview with a focus on immigration and its implications for LA County, especially when we talk about undocumented mixed status families with young children. He is going to look at relevant data and key insights. And, you know, he's going to share the story of California and demographic analysis on shifts and looking at, you know, the current crisis and our democracy, economy, and climate change. So I do want to invite you to consider that while the federal administration and mainstream media continues to project and profile immigration issue as just a brown, you know, immigrant issue, leaders like Dr. Pastor and organizations, and there are many organizations that are doing immigrant rights work and working with the diverse communities across Los Angeles County, but I do want to lift up too, the Black Alliance for Just Immigration and Asian Americans Advancing Justice, SOCal, working with black immigrants and Asian American and Pacific Islander immigrants. And I, you know, lift this up because in Los Angeles County, what we are seeing is a unified multiracial, multicultural solidarity that is resisting all of the federal acts that are violent and that are really hurting and harming families. And the solidarity in this county is rich and at least understanding of the strength of diversity for our community is something that, you know, we need to really be proud of during these difficult times. So there will be time for discussion when Dr. Manuel presents. And so with that, I'll introduce him. I know Dr. Manuel Pastor many years. He, he is an economist and a distinguished professor of sociology and American studies and ethnicity at the University of Southern California. He currently directs the Equity Research Institute and did you, you probably found, you're the founder, yes.
It's mine.
Has written a number of books. I will, you know, call out Solidarity Economics, Why Mutuality and Movements Matter, and a number of articles that he has been featured on podcasts. And so one in particular that I'm really just, you know, excited to share is with Angela Blackwell Glover, looking at multiracial democracy work that they have been leading for decades. And so with that, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thanks, glad to be here, thanks for the introduction. I always say the most important fact is tomorrow I will have been married to the same woman for 44 years. So, which speaks to both love and endurance, but there you go. So in a world of hurt and horror, there are so many different reactions. We hear from our families fear, we certainly hear uncertainty. And if you've spent any time on the streets, the other emotion that you've seen is hot anger. People incredibly upset with this situation of federal overreach and threats to Los Angeles. And I think one of the key tasks for us is how do we take hot rage and make it into the cold anger of strategy? That is where you're upset about what's going on, but it's not just throwing stuff at the police or protesting, it's trying to figure out what to do. One part of that is to try to look at the long run, what led up to this, and then to look a little bit at the data, and that's what I'll try to do in a very short amount of time. So it's easy, given the turmoil of the current moment, to forget that this has been a long time coming. The 2008, 2009 financial crisis stripped assets, particularly from black and Latino homeowners, but from many others as well, and inculcated in our young people a complete lack of faith in the capitalist system that seemed to drive the economy into a ditch. Obama got elected, which brought a free, a brief glimpse of open change. But the immediate backlash to that in the form of the Tea Party racially tinged, trying to pull away from government help, helped to prepare the ground for Trump 1.0. That was a moment of trying out what has now turned out to be, back then it was Project, I Have No Idea What I'm Doing. Now it's Project 2025, a very determined strategy that was denied, but is being enacted in full. The COVID crisis created a situation where that disease revealed our illnesses as a society, racial wealth gap, some people had no cushion to survive, unequal access to the health system, and for many, an initial realization for the first time remains true today, that one-fifth of the residents of LA County are either undocumented themselves or a US citizen or green card holder family member living with undocumented family member, and so frozen out initially of the CARES Act and of that support. We thought those things would get addressed with the racial reckoning, which focused initially on anti-black racism, but broadened, of course, to consider the comparable experiences of others. But now we're living in Trump 2.0. So what helped bring this moment? Part of it is the changing demography of the country, the fact that the country is slated to become majority people of color by the year 2045, something which may cause those of us in LA a moment of great joy because we understand that this will mean that the rest of America will finally know what a Korean taco truck is and what could possibly be wrong with that. But of course, for lots of the rest of the country, it's created a sense of their America disappearing on them, just as they are also grappling with economic uncertainty as a result of inequality and the insecurity that was laid bare by the financial crash. California has been through that before. If you look at the demographic change in the US between 2000 and 2050, that's basically what California went through between 1980 and 2000. California was America fast forward, that era was our era of anxiety about immigration, of a rejection of affirmative action, of a over-incarceration of black and Latino youth, particularly black youth. So we've been through this before and we think we're starting to come out a little bit on the other side. Here's a couple of things that are important about it, and we'll start to dive into LA, which is that though the country is changing, change in California is slowing down, and change in Los Angeles is very much slowing down. We're about as Latino as we're going to get, share of black folks will decline slightly, share of Asians will stay about the same. If you want to ask what California, what LA looks like going forward, it's LA today. Why is that? It has a lot to do with changing shifts in both immigration and in births. First on immigration. In fact, while most people would judge because of the heated rhetoric around immigration that there's been a huge uptick in the country, in fact, immigration into the country and the share of the foreign-born has been slowing down, in particular between 2010, 2020. Some increase in 2022 and 2023, when there was a big jump at the border, which of course was something that occurred during the Biden administration and fed into some of the anxieties that led to the election of Trump. But up till then, the share of foreign-born in the United States was growing slowly. What was different was where that immigration was going. In 1990, fully one-third of all the immigrants in the United States lived in California. Now it's only about 22%. What's happening? Immigrants are moving elsewhere. They're either directly going to other states or they're leaving California after some time here. You could see the more recent phenomena in the next chart. By the way, if these are a lot of charts, I don't care, I like them. So I'll stick with them. This is showing you immigrants who arrived in the previous five years. And in 1980, I think it is, or is it 19? 1980, again, about a third of all the most recent immigrants came to California. What you could see is that that's been much lower in recent years. That is, only about 15% of the recent immigrants have come to California. Much lower share going to New York or Illinois, usual receiving spots, where they've gone is Texas and Florida, where people might hate you, but you can buy a house. And also to other parts of the country, including the deep south and the Midwest. And so that's where the anxiety is occurring because that's where a lot of the new immigrants are showing up. And it also means that with this most recent uptick in asylum seekers, they've actually gone to other states and not so much to California and not so much to LA, which also explains why we in Los Angeles, aside from the fact that we're a big immigrant community, have had more positive relationships with considering ourselves to be an immigrant destination, is we actually also have not been hit as much by the waves of people who have come. You could see that in part by looking at the share of residents who are foreign-born in the United States, purple line still continuing to drift upwards slightly. In California, that curve has been bent, the share of residents who are foreign-born is on the decline. It's been on to decline in LA since 2000. That's again, less people coming directly here, more people moving away, often just to the inland empire or central California, and more of those people having children who are first fivers in part, which changes who is US-born. This just shows you the LA County population broken up by both race and for Latinos and Asians, nativity. What you could see here is that about half of our, about twice as many Latinos are, not quite, about, about 160%, 1.5 times as many Latinos are US-born as are immigrant. When you move to the Asian population, about twice as many Asians are immigrant as are US-born. So that's a big difference in those two populations. Now, the thing I Now, the thing I want to also focus in on is what's been happening to the youth population. And this is something you're familiar with, but a lot of people are not, which is that the youth population has been on a steady decline in LA County. Now, most people think that that's just, for example, young white youth. The really striking thing is that there's been a sharp decline also in the number of Latino youth. By the way, this is a good question for demographic trivia games, which is if you look at the 100th largest metro areas in the United States, the only metro area in the US that's seen a decline in the number of Hispanic children over the last decade or so is Los Angeles County. Why? Because our immigrants, remember that data, they're more long-settled. Their family formation patterns are getting closer to US family formation patterns, just replacing yourself. And we've also had the push-out of housing prices. This is one of the reasons why our school districts are worried about enrollments going forward. But it also means the following thing if you think about that data. And this is why it's so crucial, what you've begun to take a stand on, what all of LA is taking a stand on, is our undocumented Angelinos. And I say that consciously because if you think about it, if we're getting less immigrants, that means those immigrants who are here have been here longer. They're more likely to be deeply enmeshed into our businesses, into our communities, into our faith institutions, into our PTAs. And they're more likely to be raising families. So key statistic, more than 70% of undocumented immigrants in LA County have been here for longer than a decade. They're undocumented Angelinos. And if you look at the data, we've got about 950,000 undocumented immigrants. It's a slight uptick from a few years ago. But they are more than outnumbered by US citizen family members who live with them. And if you add to that the lawful resident, green card holder, family members. And by the way, these are family members, not just roommates. And we're not counting being a cousin but not living directly with a undocumented person. But what that means is this issue of mixed-status families and uncertain legal status ripples across to multiple populations, multiple communities, and multiple parts of our economy. For the first five community, 20% of first-five kids have at least one parent who's undocumented. And so the children you serve, to the extent that they are aware of it through their older brothers and sisters, their siblings, are worried about whether they'll come home. They may be, whether their parents will come home. They may be suffering from less income as people are fearful to go to work. Less nutrition as people are fearful to shop. Where are people from? Biggest share are from Mexico. Biggest number. After that, Central American, Guatemalan, and Salvadoran. But important thing for you to realize, the number of Mexican undocumented has for the last year or so, for about the last 15, has been on the decline because there's been more Mexicans going back to Mexico than coming to the United States. Net migration has been negative or zero, which means that Trump's first goal of building a wall was likely just to pin Mexicans in, which I'm sure was not his intention. But you can look as you go beneath there, Chinese, Filipino, Koreans. There's a large group from Asia, South Asian Indians, Armenians, which most people don't think about. Nicaraguans, Colombians, Peruvians, Russians, Vietnamese, many others. Many languages are spoken, not just Spanish. I'll make this data available. But what I want to jump over some of this economic data. I want to just highlight two pieces of economic data and then come to some, what I think are key takeaways. The first is race is not the only dimension by which to look at inequality. And if you look at inequality in the United States, what you're going to find is that some of the biggest shifts that have been occurring have been by class and by returns to education. Now Latinos, black folks are disproportionately working-class so suffering from that shift. But that's a big shift that's affected multiple communities. And the biggest story in the United States is that the 1% has completely run away from the rest of us. But beneath that, it's important to look at the racial disparities too, as it's relevant to some of the work that you're doing. What this looks at is median household income by ethnicity in LA County. White households, median means half make more, half make less. It's about 105,000. For black households, about 59,000. Latinos, about 71. API, about 96. Native Americans, people forget about that community, but we have the largest urban Indian population in the United States. It's about 65,000. What I want to do now, same groups, same vertical axis in terms of scale, but focusing in on households raising children five and under. Watch what happens to those disparities. For white households raising children five and under, their income is nearly three times what it is for black and Latino households. We are baking inequality in. So the kinds of programs that you do and kinds of individual actions that Commissioner Hager was pointing to, I could talk about one that's been important to us, are looking at remedying these disadvantages that are being baked in permanently. Now, the other thing to take a look at is it is easy to look at what's going on with undocumented Angelinos. And maybe widen your circle of concern to think about mixed-status families. But what used to be our moral adage, "There, but for the grace of God, go I", seems in our society to have been replaced with the adage, "Gosh, I'm glad that's not me." And so we often think, well, that's a vulnerable population. Those kids are being raised in poverty. Sure, glad it's not me. What message we need to be putting forward is our interdependence. These kids need to grow up and be productive because I'm planning on retiring and someone better out pay for that. But also, more than that, immediately look at the share of the construction trades, frontline construction workers who are undocumented. It's about 40%. We're not going to rebuild from the fires unless those workers feel secure coming to work to help provide for their families. Look at the fact that a quarter of our food preparation and serving employees are undocumented in our grounds cleaning. How do we stage the Olympics where we need those facilities to be cleaned? Or we need people to be served if we do not recognize our interdependence? And if you start to ask the question, who takes care of our children? Who takes care of our elders? It's immigrants and black women who do that work with a lot of the immigrants being undocumented. And people do contribute to the economy and taxes. So let me leave with some big messages just to be heading on time, which is very unusual for an academic who has the mic. First, we need to shift our economic narrative. And we need to shift it in multiple ways. I'll just focus in on two. First, we need to stop talking about the economy and start talking about our economy. When you say the economy, makes it sound like a set of laws out there given by God, nature, or the market, rather than something we build together and through our interdependence. Second, I love the fact that you're about fairness and inclusion. But I think that too often we forget that those of us committed to equity also ought to lift the prosperity flag. That is, we cannot build a productive and successful LA unless we're investing in these children, unless we're treating their families decently, unless we recognize how we need to come together. Second big message, we cannot shy away from talking about race and disparities, but we do need to have a different way of talking about it. It needs to be data-oriented so it's incontrovertible. It needs to be forward-facing so we recognize the inevitability. And it needs to be solidarity-oriented so that we don't forget about the class dimensions so we don't forget about how we depend on each other. We need a new level of accountability. And finally, we need a new level of recognizing our communities, of recognizing our connections, of recognizing our courage and holding in place something that my friend and now CNN commentator Van Jones once said, which is, he reminded us that when there was a march on Washington and Martin Luther King gave his famous speech, it was not called "I Have An Issue". It was called "I Have A Dream". And when we talk about children in isolation from their parents, we talk about race separate from class. When we talk about rebuilding without talking about undocumented Angelinos, when we don't focus in on how housing is critical to the well-being of first fivers, when we think that we're going to focus in on an issue, we're forgetting that what motivates people is a dream. And we're forgetting something that Commissioner Hager pointed to by talking about where our grandchildren are, where our children presumably located, which is that when we think about our children and the future we want for them, we don't think, wow, I should just focus in on their education. We think, I want good housing. I want parks that are nearby. I want a route to a college degree. I want them to be free from environmental hazards. I want their parents to have some degree of income security, that the issues are connected for our children to do better. Thank you. These are my books. You can buy them.
You probably own most of them. Chair Mitchell, do you want to? Do we have time to take questions?
Let's please. Yes, we do. We do. That was too powerful.
Commissioner. Or general reflections as well.
Thank you.
Sorry. As a representative of local government, I often struggle with what is the role of government to be as efficient in how we address all of these issues and the interconnectedness of them? Because I think, I'll speak for myself. I think sometimes we like to be a little fragmented in how we approach our work. So how would you, what do you, what would you offer in terms of the role of government to meet this moment right now?
Thank you for that very easy question. I think frankly for government leaders to express a sense of outrage at external forces not understanding who we are and what we want to be, that we have come to understand our diversity. We've come to understand the need to make the kind of investments you're making. So first, some bully pulpit. Second, to focus in on accountability, and that means metrics. Because of reasons of time, I did not delve into that. But really trying to devise some metrics that focus in on equity. And again, I really want to emphasize, I've long said, and Supervisor Mitchell knows this because we've known each other through multiple incarnations, that our equity metrics have to be about gender, they have to be about race, they have to be about class, they have to be about geography so people don't think we're focusing in on one dimension of inequality. And the other, and I think you know this, I think that there's been debate between, traditional debate between right and left in the United States, where the right says, you know, if there's a problem, we should turn to the market. The market will solve it. Housing, discrimination, even the environment. The left, too often, has said, the government, the government will solve it. And I think the new answer is turn to each other. Now, why I think that's powerful is because it helps us recognize interdependence and it helps you in local government recognize the need to work with community-based organizations, to open up the doors, to realize that when that starts, it's bound to be uncomfortable because people who've been shut out from ears from having a voice are not going to be the most polite when they get to that table. But if we can open up to community-based organizations, we built trust, people can understand the limits of what local government can do and help you to do the rest.
Thank you.
Let me thank, this isn't the closing, but I just want to thank Let me thank, this isn't the closing, but I just want to thank First Five staff and our president, CEO, because today was a masterclass in terms of the information that was shared and our opportunity to really see that and be educated. And so sort of along the lines of your question, as I look at your slide, that it's time for a long conversation, not a quick conversion. You know, I'm wondering what role First Five can and must play, that on one level it could be perceived as kind of outside, mission creep outside of our scope, and yet not, as you talked about, the interconnectedness and all things that contribute to the health and well-being and success of a child zero to five. So embarking upon this, how do we set up for ourselves and our community-based partners the long conversation? What do you see for us?
Well, thanks for noticing that, that I jumped over. Let me say a little bit about that. I think that sometimes we think about interactions as conversions. I've got a message, hoping to persuade you of my message, I'm not really going to listen to you about what your concerns are. And I think, you know, that's a little bit like not doing the true organizing of listening to where people are at, what they might be uncomfortable with. You know, if you'd had your ear to the ground last summer, you would have realized that even long-term undocumented immigrants were going, who the hell are these new immigrants? And convincing their mixed-status, legal, naturalized relatives to vote in a way that might harm the interest because they thought it wouldn't be me. If you had your ear to the ground, you would have heard that. If you had your ear to the ground, you would have heard not those who are already woke, but those who still need to be awakened. And I think what that means is, how do we listen uncomfortably to folks who might say things in ways that are a bit awkward but are important? Arielle comes from Community Coalition, where the key and central thing there that I helped to document in a book about bringing Black and Brown residents together was just listening to each other's stories. So I think that's very important. So what's the specific thing? Some years ago, we worked, still have it, with California Community Foundation to create a council on immigrant integration now called immigrant inclusion. You've been to the summits. And the first thing we asked people at the first meeting was to take somebody out to breakfast they'd never met, they'd never spent time with. And I'm proud that somebody from the Chamber, Angelica Salas, went out to breakfast. And within three years, the Chamber's number-one lobbying goal at the U.S. Congress was comprehensive immigration reform. And there's a lot of stuff with the Chamber I might disagree with, things around the minimum wage, but they've been fairly solid on that issue. But it was about going out with somebody who wasn't in the world. So I would ask those of you on this case, who can you be an ambassador to? Who's, there's that famous scene in Casablanca at the end where the French lieutenant says, round up the usual suspects. Round up the unusual suspects. Who seems like they know nothing about First Five? Who's in business community? Who's in workforce development? Who's in the police department? Who would you not expect to convert, but to converse with? How is that going to change you? Like where you start to think, well, we should really take business interests into account, et cetera. So how do we create those conversations?
I appreciate that. Madam Vice Chair.
I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you for this. I want to thank our president and the entire First Five team for having these really difficult conversations today because it's necessary. Like, we can't shy away from the discussion about our budget, where we are, and also race. And I want to thank you, Arielle, when you mentioned like the Know Your Rights workshop because when, in the community, that's like the first thing we're going to, even, you know, in the organizing at the hyper-local level, it's like we need to have more Know Your Rights workshops. But we've heard from families that it's not helping because they don't, Know Your Rights only work when there's due process. And that's being violated left and right. So we're teaching them the things that they would normally be able to benefit from when their rights were being honored, and that's not happening. And so we're now seeing ourselves go into crisis response where it's like, now we just need legal aid, we need to deliver food, we need to provide that emotional support to families. And so I just want to thank you for pointing that out because sometimes in the community, we're spinning our head, like, our wheels thinking like, why isn't this thing working when this is what we were told initially we would need to do? And so we have to pivot now. And I also want to thank you, Dr. Pastore, for pointing out the similarities in the conditions of Black and Latinx folks, and also the fact that, for me, it's, for Black people in particular, the harms right now are more insidious. We see the raids on undocumented families and individuals, but there's less of a focus on the ways that the voter suppression is going to directly impact Black communities or the fact that the federal cuts impacted 300,000 Black women in 90 days from the moment those started because the U.S. federal government is the largest employer of Black people in this country. And so our families are suffering on top of, in California, a very progressive state, Prop 6 to end slavery still didn't pass, but Prop 36 did, which is harkening back to the war on crime or, you know, the war on drugs and the crime bill. So there are some ways that Black families are suffering that's not really talked about in mainstream media or even amongst organizers because it is so insidious and it's sort of a slow drip. And so I just appreciate you bringing that up today. And it reminds me, when you talked about how we make progress sometimes, but then it rolls back. Supervisor Mitchell hosted a viewing of Who We Are: A Chronicle of Racism in America by Jeffrey Robinson years ago, and I would encourage everyone to watch, in addition to reading your books, because it talks about the tipping point. And it's specifically about anti-Black racism in America, but I think it speaks to just racism in general, how over time with Civil Rights Acts and housing, fair housing, you know, these things get us to the tipping point, but then something happens and it rolls back. Because there is an effort in this country to preserve what this country was founded on, which is white male ownership privilege. That's what it comes down to. And so that is, the force is strong with that one. And so we have to constantly be willing to push past the comfortable places when we get to, so when I think about moving past the conversation to the conversion, it's similar to like tug-of-war, you just have to get a little bit over that line in order to say we won. And sometimes we get a little bit over that line and we take our hands off the rope. This time, we've got to push it all the way to the end. So I just thank you for this today.
You're provoking so much. I think the one thing that I really do want to pick up on is that when we look for solidarity and commonality, that's not an excuse to forget difference and specificity of experience and the specifics of the Black experience, the specifics of the Indigenous experience, how Asians are maybe immigrants, but that's a different experience than for Latinos, how Latinos themselves really need to be talked about in very different ways and decomposed. And I think the other thing you're saying, I always like to talk about, you know, sometimes people talk about going to the gym. It feels like a funny analogy. And then you know that some of you, you say you go to the gym, but you don't really, you don't, you don't really go to the gym. And what that means is that when you do go, you make some mistakes, drop weights on your feet, people in the gym aren't going to help you because they're like, well, you're here in January, you're not going to be here in July. And that's like not talking about race and racism every day. If you talk about it every day, if you practice, you'll get better at it. If you make mistakes, people will call you in versus calling you out. They'll help you and say, you know, that's not quite right. Here's how I think about it. How do we come together? And so I think we sometimes think that that conversation versus conversion is about forgetting to push any buttons. It's not. It's about staying boldly but staying with someone.
The movie was our first, my team raised a fist fight this day, two years ago. We host them monthly, invite everybody to take a look at my website because... We are having conversations about race every month in the second district. We have partnered in the past, and maybe we should think about future RJLE in collaboration with First Five. I'll share the link so people can look at three years' worth of these gatherings where we have now touched tens of thousands of Angelenos who've come to participate and have a conversation about race. So thank you. Yes.
I want to thank you again. Thank you so much for being here and for this presentation, and I, and again, to the team for making this happen. It's really wonderful to be here. I think that some of us were talking during the break about, I think, the overwhelming feeling that a lot of us are feeling is this, the freeze state of like feeling like we're not, that lack of being able to do something. And so this was very, very helpful and enlightening, and I'm very familiar with the cold anger reference. And so I'm looking forward to delving more into that and kind of figuring out where those, where that piece is. But I think that what it sounds like you're saying is that we need to organize ourselves as a group, as a movement, in order to fight back against this. And I think it'll be very empowering for so many and to really speak volumes. This morning was the first day of school for my children, and a number of teachers stood outside the front with, you know, signs because their union decided they wanted to say, we stay, we stand with immigrants, we stand with undocumented children, and you are safe here. And it was a very small, touching, but beautiful moment. And I don't even think that there are that many in our particular school, but it wasn't, that wasn't the point, right? It was, the point was the larger message. And so I think that's the small, and I think that we continue to think about how to make it the big, right? And the bigger so that we continue to fight. So thank you again. This was very helpful.
Well, maybe I'll say one last thing, prompted by what you just said. So as you might guess, for someone who's an academic who's done a lot of work on immigrants the last four or five weeks, has been rather busy. And I've been running from street protests to faith gatherings to providing data, to talking to LA Economic Development Corporation to collaborate with them on great work for the county, et cetera. And so it's a lot of running around. And someone asked me, well, aren't you tired? I mean, you must be exhausted. And I said, well, this is the moment I was born for. This is the moment I've been training for. This is the moment that calls us. What you been training for? This is our moment.
Mr. Berg, did I see you pull your mic to you?
No.
Okay. Yes.
It's lovely seeing you, Manuel. It's nice to have known you all these decades, but that you're still fighting in the same fight and believing the same thing. And I want to thank you very much for coming today and for what you said, because it's very near and dear to my heart. I think that this is our moment that we have to change in this country. I agree with that. Interestingly, and I'm going to ask you, and maybe ask you to participate in this, I had two very affluent, white male seniors, juniors in various universities in this country walk into my office six weeks ago and sit down and said, Astrid, can you tell us how to live lives that are significant? Like, we would like to not be living the life that we're living. We want to make sure that we have impact and that it has meaning in life, and we'd like to talk to you about it. And they want to start a national movement. So we've been having this dialogue about calling it the journey, that we're in a journey, they're in a journey in this world, and how do they not only impact the country, right, but locally? And I think so much of what you said is significant that it is who we are in our village that then impacts who we are as a country. And so I want to talk to you a little bit before you go today about having you have that conversation with them, because they're looking at sending it out across the country, because they are worried about racism and they are worried about poverty and all of the traditions that we have in this country. And there are moments recently where I felt really hopeless.
Yeah.
So two things. Number one, I would really like to have a recording of what we just listened to, which was remarkable, and sharing that with these young men who don't go to SC, they're not in Southern California. And maybe that's a good thing, I don't know. We're both professors at SC, so. But I mean, I really would like to see that group participate in bringing change. And then finally, I love the word equity, the word equity, as long as it also has excellence attached to it, that it's not just that we see people as, that they're getting access to something, but that it's excellent. That's my, one of my things. Yeah.
Yeah. We could not sustain this level of cruelty if we were not having a spiritual crisis in the United States. So I applaud those young men for trying to find purpose.
Drew.
Can you get a question from Commissioner?
I apologize for being me out of being the opinion or thought.
Please stand in line. I'll show my face.
Thank you.
I do think we all need to do something to take care of ourselves, especially as frontline workers who are out there supporting people, because this is heavy. And so I just would like to remind everybody to do something for your mental health, especially today.
Beyond the M&amp;M's I just consume minus.
There's the brownies, too.
Yeah, I had those, too. Thank you for the reminder. Thank you. Appreciate you both very, very much. Let me take us to a public comment on Agenda Item Number Eight.
Why, thank you, Madam Chair. There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Are there, Agenda Item Number Nine, is there any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Confirming there are no general public comments as well.
Is there any other business that I should consider or call on before we adjourn? Hearing none. Thank you all for coming today, and we're now adjourned. Our next regular board meeting will be on October 9th, 2025, at 1:30 p.m. We stand adjourned.